It's a call to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. We've got a little bit different agenda for this evening, so I'm going to turn it over to Business Manager Veek.
Thank you. If you and Todd Tolke could join me up there, I swear to you that as new members of board. Kate Parker and Todd Tolke had a regular meeting of the school board held on Wednesday, April 11th, 2018. The school board declared you were a duly elected member of the school board of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 49-5. Section 13814 of the SDCL provides that newly elected members of the school board should qualify and assume their office at the annual meeting of the school board in July by taking and subscribing to an oath or affirmation to support the law and Constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and to faithfully perform the duties of school board membership. At this time, as Business Manager of the district, it is my pleasant duty to administer this oath. Member Parker, you will go first. Please state the oath that you have in front of you.
Thank you. I, Kate Parker, having been elected to the office of member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District, 49-5 of Minnehaha County and Lincoln County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of school board membership.
You have two oaths in front of you that I'm going to ask you to subscribe to, one for your records and one for the be kept in the finance office. Thank you very much. Member Tolke, will you please subscribe to the oath that you have in front of you?
I, Todd Tolke, having been elected to the office of member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District, 49-5 of Minnehaha County and Lincoln County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of school board membership.
Thank you. Will you please sign the two oaths, one for you and one for the finance office? Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I get an approval of the June payroll, please, and claims to vendors?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the supplemental consent agenda, items A, claims to Stanford, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion passes with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. Can I get approval or a motion to approve the supplemental consent agenda items 5B, claims to Avera, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. I did not say aye. One abstention, that passes with one abstention from myself. All right, on to the organization of the school board, and I will turn it over to Business Manager Veek once again.
Thank you. It's now time to elect the president of the school board. We'll now open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Kent Alberti for president.
Thank you.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Kent Alberti being president, vote aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations, Kent.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to first thank Kate for her year of leadership as president of the board. We've had a busy year, and you've done a fine job, and I thank you very much for your diligence and leadership, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. May I have a, or open up for Vice President of the school board, open up nominations?
I would nominate Cynthia Mickelson.
Second.
Any further nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Cynthia Mickelson for Vice President, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Cynthia.
Thank you. I look forward to serving you.
May I have a motion for authorization to pay the members of the school board?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to acknowledge designation of banks as depositories for funds of the district.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And motion to establish the second and fourth Monday of each month as designated board meeting dates.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Motion to designate the Sioux Falls Argus leader as the official newspaper.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And motion authorizing membership to the associated school boards of South Dakota.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And we need to appoint delegate and an alternate to the associated school boards. Can we take both at the same time? Okay.
I'd like to nominate Kent as the delegate and Cynthia as the alternate.
Second.
Any further nominations?
Thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. No, I'll just stay right here. I'll do my best from this side. Further right than I typically am, but I'm fine with it. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the meetings, or the meetings held June 25th and June 27th, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Bev, anyone wishing to address the board? Okay, thank you. And may I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And good news report. Deanne.
Good evening. Human nature has us all assuming that we'll get what we want when we want it, right? We expect fast food, instant banking, access to immediate medical care, and then there's the internet. When we expect an instant connection and it doesn't happen, then frustration sets in very quickly. Well, the resolutions to connectivity issues are not always easily found, but the Sioux Falls School District has an amazing team of IT professionals that keep searching for those answers and addressing problems as they arrive. Director of IT Mike Christopherson is going to tell you about a significant project undertaken by his team this summer and in an effort to keep us all connecting without issue.
Thanks, Deanne, for allowing us the opportunity to share our good news with the board tonight. Interesting side effect, or side note, I had a principal tell me once that typically he only contacted me when we had bad news or something wasn't working, so it's always good to have good news in the IT world, otherwise no news is sometimes good news. So let me set the stage for you a little bit before I turn it over to Randy, who's one of our network engineers here today with me. And to provide a greater insight into a switch replacement we did. I was fortunate to start with the district two years ago as we organized and deployed new district switches and access points across all of our buildings. This allowed me to be part of the process, which allowed me better to understand our environment and the complexity and capacity that we have in this district. We officially completed the project at 3:51 on February 2nd, 2017, so Groundhog's Day of 2017, and 3:51 meaning the last okay and checkbox was done with the state, essentially through an email that everything was up and running. We received word that day, exact same day, February 2nd, at 4:55 PM, that 296, all of our switches we had just got done with, were being recalled due to a clock chipset issue. So a component issue within the switches all needed to be replaced. So my immediate reaction was to make sure it was Groundhog's Day and not April Fool's Day, first of all, and it was. So then after that, I just verified the validity of the information that I'd received and let the network engineers know I have good and bad news for you, Randy. Good news is that, hey, we get new switches. The bad news, well, we get to install new switches. When faced with this challenge, we focused on making this a positive experience for all stakeholders through organizing, planning, and implementation process. In a time when we rely heavily on 100% uptime of our network, we wanted to have very little interruption to service while making sure all of our resources that we need to complete were available, including our ITS staff here in the district, BIT at the state level, RTI, one of our vendors, and then SDN, a local provider. The project went even better than expected here this, in the month of June. We received a lot of positive feedback and we finished ahead of schedule. This seems like a good time to introduce Randy as I'm talking about all the positive stuff, to go through a few of the details that we did during this switch deployment. This is Randy Ball.
Thank you, Mike. Through this process, we were originally slated for 10 days to get the process done. We had 296 switches. This photo up here, this silver device is a switch. It's where all the cables connect for door readers, security cameras, access points, printers, computers, any device that needs to go out to the internet. So like Mike said, with that process, we had a 10-day window, and we had to coordinate schedules with buildings, waxing schedules, room cleanings, et cetera. We went through that process, and I was very fortunate that I had a team, local vendor, that had four staff that were willing to do what it took to get the job done. So we worked long hours, got the task done in seven and a half days, so we were two and a half days ahead of schedule, so we were very excited about that. The other side effect to this is these 296 switches are licensed via the cloud, and so we added 296 in there already existing, and we added another 296 that threw us over license. So we're getting continual alerts that license is going to expire, which would, our network would go down if that happened. So we were able to secure an extension on the license date to get all the switches out at 40 locations and get the new ones put in. And what that entailed is all these cables you see here, a lot of them, like the pink cables are our access points, so there's specific ports and there's specific settings on those port configurations. So the dynamics of it is you have to first record all the cables there, make sure they get put back in the right spot, pull the existing out, put the new one in, but also with that, you have routing information that goes out to SDN. You've got to retain that, you've got to maintain that connection for these devices to update the configuration on them. So it was a little bit of a juggling act to get them and put in place, but once we got the process going, it went pretty well, and we were fortunate to get through in a timely manner. This particular closet here is Annie Sullivan. I'll click through some pictures of some of the other environments that we have. This is at Lincoln. This is in the tunnel. You have to go downstairs on the ramp there, and then you have to, on the next tier, I guess, that's here. So then you come down and you're looking down the tunnel, the switches are back here, the switch. So you've got to step over a hazard area to get to this location, and then these are, this is the switch that's down there with all the cabling, and this is the battery backup unit. So that's one environment that we went through. This is another environment at Memorial Middle School in the upstairs penthouse. The ladder's like literally this steep, so you've got to carry gear up there and hope that you don't drop it as you're going up the stairs. There's the cabling for the switches. Here's our battery backup units as well. And then you've got to carry the old stuff down the stairs and hope that you don't take a header down the stairs. So it was a little, there's some areas in the district that are quite treacherous. There's environments that are not the best environment for this gear to be sitting in, but it is what it is and it's what we need to have. This particular item is over at Axle Park in the boiler room. They're getting new boilers, so the boiler soot and all the accumulation of that stuff, we're trying to protect the new gear that we just put in so that it doesn't prematurely This is another closet at Roosevelt. So in the grand scheme of things, pulling the cables out, sometimes they're short, some of them long, some of them don't fit, you know, so you hope to get everything put back in. Dr. Maher experienced firsthand, if a cable doesn't get plugged in, your computer won't connect to the internet, so accidents happen. It wasn't intentional, but like I said, they do, they do. We unplugged probably 14,000 cables district-wide and hoped that we got 14,000 plugged back in. So that was pretty much what we went through with this process. Are there any questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's like a really bad version of a puzzle.
It's like my biggest nightmare.
It's a really bad version of a puzzle you have to put back together.
Thank you.
All right. I don't know enough about that to even ask a question, so.
I just nod.
That's good. All right. We will move on. Thank you, gentlemen, for the report. Conflicts of interest. We're going to take three actions on conflicts of interest. First one would be, I'll need a motion to approve the conflicts of interest that have been submitted for the administration. If I can get a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries, and then we'll have two other separate actions. One for Cynthia Mickelson, who submitted a conflict of interest after the rest of the agenda had been printed, so can I get a motion to approve Cynthia Mickelson's conflict of interest statement?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. And then one for Todd Tolke that got in late. It's in the, it's in our agenda, but it didn't get in the pre-printed version, so if I can have a motion to approve Todd Tolke's conflict of interest form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right. Now on to item 12, approval of the consent agenda, if I could get a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. And on to reports of the superintendent. Dr. Maher.
Thank you. As you know, we're doing a number of studies looking at different programs. The next program for your review tonight comes to you from Dr. Knold, our Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Administrative Services, and the report that he will be giving you is on the success coordinator review.
Good evening. This report is the review of the success coordinator position study, and the purpose of the report is to provide the school board an update as to where we're at in the process of this study currently. This falls under District Priority Area Number Two in School Culture and Climate. The success coordinators in each of the buildings or coordinators from here forward work with the students who are most at risk and especially at risk of school failure, and then they work with those individual students and families to develop interventions to support those students so that they have a successful experience throughout their high school careers or elementary or middle school, depending on what grade level they are in. Currently, our allocation of FTE for the positions of the coordinators, there's 8.0 FTE at the elementary, which covers nine schools. There's two schools that have a half-time each, the others are at full times. Middle school has a 1.5 impact, impacting two of the schools, one of which will have a 1.0 and the other one a .5. It's split with one of those elementary positions. And then the high school has a 3.0 FTE impact with the three traditional high schools. 7.0 FTE of that is funded through the federal Title I programming. The remainder is through the general budget of the schools. The program study, we broke this into four different parts. When we started working with the schools and the success coordinators or the coordinators, we broke into areas that we tried to determine, first of all, task one, identify the current duties, the amount of time of their position that is expended in those duties. The second task was to identify the students that they worked with so that we could look at that specifically to identify the criteria, which was step number four, but we looked at those specific students they worked with, the numbers of students, because that's changed over the years with the change of 504s and students that came forward with the student assistance team, attendance, and then the social-emotional aspect. Task three was to look at the job descriptions, to change those so that they matched and reflected what was the need of the school and the individual students within those schools. And then the fourth task was the criteria that we'd use to evaluate the impact of this position on the students. We're able to achieve all four of those tasks, and we'll look at that criteria over the next year. So I'll break down those individual tasks as we move forward. So the first one, to look at the duties of the coordinator position and the time requirements that they had. This is broken into a chart here. Each one of the levels, so elementary, starting with this first one, looked at this as a group. So the coordinators at each one of the nine schools met together to coordinate and talk about what they utilize their time or how they utilize their time. It varied a little bit through those buildings, but they came to these averages, then went through with the building principals to agree and check off on those use of times, and that was sent on to the central committee here. If you notice there, with the student crisis response, 22% in the group are individual counseling programs. They spend roughly about 65% of their time specifically with student contacts, with the individual students. The remaining part of that time dealt with the SAT team, the student assistance team, so students that referred to that, and 504 coordinators. You'll kind of see some differences in those times as we go through each one of the three levels. A lot of that has to do just with sheer numbers, number of students that are on 504s and that are referred to the student assistance team. Looking at the middle school, direct services to students, they put that into one group as 67% of their time, so very similar to the elementary. They did separate, and the elementary, if you recall, the 504 coordinator and the SAT team coordination was about 10% of their duties. Well, the middle school split that out just because of numbers, and we'll look at that coming up in this report, but the 504 coordination, they had about 10% of their total time, and then the SAT team, their student assistance team, was about 10% of their time, and the remaining parts of that were broken out there. This was the only group that listed the parent communications and contact separately. It ended up being about 3% of their time. What I did meet with, because I met with each one of the groups along with Deb Mylenberg-Wilson to talk through their time and the study that was being conducted, each one of them did have significantly more parent contacts, because each time they do the 504, have those meetings, the parent is in participation with that. But we did take this information generally from what they sent in and put that together. So as you look at that parent communication and contact, it does specifically hit each one of those things where they're meeting with the 504s or student assistance team, a parent is contacted on that as well. But this was the use of time, 67% of their time with direct student services. In the high school part, it changed more so, so you saw a lot of similarities in the first two groups. In the high school, 504s take up about 25% of the time that they utilize. Some of that still is with the direct parent communication and direct student communication, but specifically with the 504s, that took up about 25% of the time. 20% of the time using that alternative programming, so whether that be at the ombudsman program or other locations we have, most of that was the ombudsman program, but other locations we'd have meetings 29% of the time. That did deal with the student assistance team, meeting with counselors, meeting with predominantly staff or parents as well, and then student contacts was about 25% of the time. You'll see the 504s change significantly as you go through just the sheer numbers and upcoming numbers, but that was the use of the time and then their main task. So it does vary specifically with the high school compared to the other two. The next part of that was task number two, identify the student groups the coordinators interact with at the schools, which is an important piece to have, especially if we're going to identify the impact that they have and whether that's beneficial to the school district and to those individual students. But at the elementary level, there's an average caseload of about 18 students. Those 18 students are a caseload or students that they meet with on a regular basis and work with on a regular basis to put in place interventions and to meet with small group counseling or individual counseling. Average unique student contacts per school year, there's about 262 students they would meet with. A lot of times that was on the student assistance team where they would meet and talk with a student or go into the classrooms for classroom crisis intervention, or it could be part of their caseload as well. There's 337 classroom responses or crisis responses to the classroom, which is a very unique and specific part of the elementary, where they'll go to that classroom to help with a specific student so that the teacher can continue on with the class activities. And so they'll intervene, that may be a shorter time out of, out of the classroom, and we'll see that as one of the criterias that they establish for the success of their, their position. position. And then the average student served by 504s was an average of 34 in the elementary in each one of these schools. There was one school that was noted that had 81, but the average on that was about 34 students per 504. And you see that increase with each one of the levels. When we look at the middle schools, the students that they came in contact with, their caseload was averaging about 28, so their individual students they worked with on a continual basis was 28 compared to the elementary that went up. Unique student contacts per school is about 253, most of that coming through the student assistance team and meeting with those students to set up plans as a result of that student assistance team intervention. And then the average number of students served on 504s was 72, and that's between those two middle schools, Whittier and George McGovern. The high school, their caseloads were at 35. Their unique contacts were 319. And then you see here with the 504s, that number went up to 133 on the average per school. And that's with all three of the traditional high schools that were impacted there. So that was the second task that we had. A lot of the things that you saw through that student support work or where they'd make those individual contacts with students, a lot of that came through those first two things, our first three things, which would be the group counseling or individual counseling and crisis interventions, especially in the elementary setting. You saw more student assistance team interventions at the high school and middle school than you did at the elementary, but elementary was significantly larger with the crisis interventions. Those other things that were on there as far as attendance teams, agency referrals, or also other just individual contacts that they had, and then obviously the 504s. They have to have an individual meeting with each one of those parents each year with the 504s. Task three was to rewrite the general job descriptions for each one of these. There was originally just one general job description that covered all success coordinators, elementary, middle school, and high school. As we went through the study, it was very evident that it's quite different need at each of the three levels, especially when you're looking at that elementary level where they're doing a lot of the crisis intervention. Where you go to the high school level, they're looking a lot at the intervention of programming and placements, where are students going to succeed and be the most successful at. So we did rewrite the job descriptions. Those were attached in the report as well. The last time these job descriptions were updated was in 2014, and quite a bit had changed during that time, especially in the area of the 504s. And so it was created with each one of those at each of the levels. The success coordinators were a big part of that and met with them, Deb and I, a couple of times to be able to go through and identify what areas they worked in the most. And then met with the building principals to be able to confirm those things for their job description. The fourth and final area was to establish a set of criteria to be able to evaluate their impact on student success and what they did, what returns we had on that investment. And so that area, when you go through, was a little bit different again for each one of the three levels. In the elementary, we're going to look at, obviously, the number of students that they see on the student assistance team that come through there, because that's the ability for the administrator or the teachers to refer somebody to a group that'll look at each one of those students individually and determine what may be the best help or assistance they can provide that student to be successful. Sheer number of students on 504, so we'll look at that. Those are easy things to pull. The last part on there was the part where the individual success coordinators would have to track the data, or we'll pull the data through infant campus once we know the individuals' names and when they started on their caseload or when they started working with it. The biggest thing that they pointed on that, that they're trying to reach as their goal, is the diminished amount of time out of the classroom. And that was their biggest goal at the elementary. They can keep that child in the classroom and teach them skills, coping skills or other skills that they would need to be able to be successful within the classroom. But that was their number one goal, to be able to diminish that amount of time that they need to be out of the classroom. You can see the other goals on there. Probably the second thing was the improved attendance, the counseling sessions that we're going to track those individual and group counseling sessions that they have with the students. But all that really related back to the diminished time out of the classroom. For the middle school, they really identified two areas that they felt were their key areas, the improved student attendance and reduced office referrals. So they look at that and the behavior side of it and also the behavior of the school attendance, so missing fewer number of days within a given year. They'll still also track the student assistance team referrals, the 504s, and then, as you can see, many of the other areas that they had identified. So we'll use all that data to see in the middle school what impact they have in those two schools. In the high school, the biggest key for them was graduation, the graduation rate. So much of what they'll have on there correlates right back into the graduation rate, that their position does make a difference for that group of at-risk students that are highly at risk of not graduating. One of the other things that they had highlighted is looking at those students that had dropped out of school or had stopped attending, to how they can get them reintegrated back into a school setting, whether that be at ombudsman, whether that be back into the traditional school, or wherever that would fit best for that individual student, but to get them reintegrated back in there. They do work with many of those other areas because they know each one of those does work into the overall graduation rate. So those are the areas, the criteria. We're going to look at that through this first semester of the next school year here, the 18-19 school year, using that criteria. They have spreadsheets if they're going to track that information and data when they start working with the students, so we can see the progress of how they have an impact on that individual student going through. The cost of this program is $613,268. It is budgeted for the FY19 school year, and that's for 12.5 FTE or coordinators. The committee participation, we did work specifically with each one of the coordinators at the building levels, met with them at a minimum of two times. Some of the levels we met with more than that, to be able to go through that information that they gathered and talked through, the building principals, assistant superintendents, and the others that are listed there as well. So it was well vetted through, but it originally started with the success coordinators to find out what they did and what they were doing with their building principals. Summary, the coordinators assist our most at-risk students in each one of the school settings, elementary, middle school, and high school. There's 13 coordinators that cover the 14 buildings with a total of 12.5 FTE, seven of that being funded through federal program or Title I. There's 849 students receiving 504 services that are assisted through those coordinators. That's over half of the 504s that are administered or served throughout our school district, roughly over 1,500 that were served through the school district. So 849 of those are assisted through those coordinators. They've responded over 3,000 classroom calls in the elementary, whether that be assistance or crisis call within those elementarys. They have over 3,500 unique students they've worked with in those buildings, in the 14 different buildings. They caseloaded 323 students as a total. They chair both the SAT team, student assistance team, and the 504 meetings. They establish the new job descriptions to fit each one of the levels in elementary, middle, and high school. And then we establish our criteria to be able to evaluate the success of their position through this first semester of the 2018-19 school year. Our recommendation for the board to acknowledge the current status of the Sioux Falls School District Success Coordinator Program Study. And I'd stand by for any questions.
A question. The new job descriptions, I don't know how much they differ from the previous, but are any of our current success coordinators impacted negatively by the new requirements?
They are not. So as far as education level, that maintained the same. And a discussion through there, because, and right now it currently requires a master degree in counseling, and because at each one of the levels, that is a part of what they do, is working with those students, whether that be in small group or individual, especially at the elementary, but going all the way through. So it still maintains the same. So it did not impact any of them in that regard.
Okay, thank you. For the evaluation purposes, I love that we're going to do it right away for a semester. Are we able to, were we tracking most of that data anyway from last year, that we can even get a baseline to see what areas for change or whatever prior to the school year?
The hard part of that is establishing that start date of when they began to work with, the exact date. So we look at the pre-attendance, post-attendance. From previous years, they'll have the listing of students that they worked with, but they didn't have exact start dates. So we're going to start to mark that. It'll be something that won't be visible to general staff.
Right.
But we'll mark that in infant campus so we can begin tracking then. And they're going to also start tracking the time out of the classrooms, which they didn't have that prior. So so many of those things in the criteria, they didn't track before. They felt anecdotally that they had had a significant impact.
Right.
You know, and which we would hope they did, and they feel they did. The principals definitely felt they did. They would argue immensely for the maintaining of this position. But to actually have the data, we needed to start establishing when they began to work with. And a lot of that's going to be done on the dates when they're referred to the student assistance team or when they put them on the caseload. So some of those things we could, time out of the classroom, we definitely could not. That wasn't recorded. Some of the simple things, attendance, we could to some point, although they didn't mark it when they began to work with a student on the caseload. They can tell when they met with them on a student assistance team. So we felt that it was wise to probably start at a certain time, which would be the beginning of the year, so we could track that consistently throughout. Now, by doing it just for a semester there, and we'll continue to follow through for multiple semesters, but majority of who they have on a caseload may not happen until they start to go throughout a year. So some kids may be on there for most of the semester, some may not be on there only a week, and others won't be on till second semester. So we'll continue to track that throughout.
Perfect. And then in the elementary school, all three of our computer immersion schools, are they all have success coordinators at their?
Uh, they do. Now you say that, yes, they do.
Yeah, so we'll be able to track that data too to see, you know, like if that's working in tandem to improve with the computer immersion. Because just, I was thinking anecdotally, when we went to the meetings there, how they talked about how that was improving attendance and behavioral there as well through the computer immersion.
That's a good question. We'll definitely, we would be able to see differences in buildings, so we'd be able to see some of those type of things.
That's great.
What to directly attribute it to, it could be part of that.
Yeah.
I hadn't looked at it that way, but yes. So they would be included in this, yes.
Okay. Any more questions for Jamie? If not, may I get a motion to acknowledge the current status of the Sioux Falls School District Success Coordinator Program Study?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you to everyone who served on the review and update. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Our next report is the adoption of the fiscal year 19 budget and certification of levies to county auditors. The report will be presented by business manager, Veek.
Thank you, Dr. Maher. As you all know, the preparation of the FY19 budget began in November when you approved the budget guidelines and timelines. It then went through, I think it was 19 smaller committees working on individual budgets with 150 different people contributing to that and preparing those budgets. It came to March when the larger budget review committee met to make a recommendation to this board. And on April 4th, we had a work session. And then on April 11th, you tentatively approved the budget. Now we're here to finalize it, quote unquote finalize it. The only change to the budget that you saw on April 11th is when our budget review committee met and we were looking at the levies and how typically the qualifying levies for state aid usually drop it this year because need outpaced local effort, it actually went up a little bit. So we reduced, when we met, we decided to reduce by an additional 10 cents our special ed discretionary levy. Now that stuff went all through the numbers, but I didn't get it changed in the final number that you saw. So we're swapping out carryover of IDA funds that we have available to us, of $500,000 for that additional 10 cent reduction in the special ed levy. So that's the only change to the budget. So those are our levies that we're going to submit to the county auditors. Of course, you know, we have up until September 30th to revise those. So those could be affected if something else happens in the next week and then is voted on, or the next couple of weeks. So these are our preliminary levies. Oftentimes, we send them to the county auditor and we don't change them, but often, but other times we do when something else. Thanks for making that larger. Appreciate it. That is a 10 cent redu-, by the way, that is a 10 cent reduction in the levy that we charged last year. So if there are, I'll stand by for questions, but I would ask that you approve the FY19 budget as presented and certify the levies to the Minnehawah County-Lincoln Auditors. And you have the suggested motion in the report, the full motion.
Do we need to read the motion? Todd? Do you want the motion read?
No, just agree, just agree with it.
We got that.
I would move to adopt the FY18 budget of the Sioux Falls School District 49.5, read this something, as presented below, and certifying the levies to the Minnehawah County-Lincoln Auditors as presented.
In FY19?
So it's FY18, is that correct?
It's FY19.
I will repeat that. I would make a motion to adopt the FY19 budget of the Sioux Falls School District 49-5 as presented below and certifying the levies to the Minnehawah and Lincoln County Auditors.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. And 13C, results of the request for proposals for a financial advisor.
We'll have Mr. Veek stay there and present this information as well.
Speaking of things that might change the levy certification in September, as originally discussed at the December 2017 school board work session and in subsequent board meetings regarding the facilities planning timeline, the administration released a request for proposal, an RFP, in June for a financial advisor in conjunction with the recommendation of the facilities task force, which was formed in accordance with the strategic plan, strategic initiative 4.2, which was to engage the community in dialogue about enrollment trends and facility needs. The recommendation from the task force was to pass a $190 million general obligation bond to fund a high, middle, and elementary school for growth, as well as identified security and ADA and other equity projects. RFPs were emailed to seven firms, and it was also placed, the RFP was also placed on the district's website and advertised in the Sioux Falls Argus Leader. The district received three proposals. We are recommending contracting with the low bid of $60,500 submitted by Doherty and Company LLC. And I would just note that Tom Grimmon and Ray Woody Woodson of Doherty are here in the audience tonight. So our recommendation to the school board is to acknowledge the results of the RFP process and authorize the president and business manager to enter into a contract with Doherty and Company LLC that is contingent upon passage of a general obligation bond referendum held in 2018.
May I have a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. I want to thank Doherty and Company for their proposal. Board member Parker and I were involved in interviewing the two finalists for that, and your firm did very fine work, and I want to thank you for that. So. Any other discussion or questions? If not, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And on to policy.
I'm sure my voice doesn't give out here. We have four policies that are up for a second reading. Policy BBB, elections. Policy BDEH, public participation at school board meetings. Policy DJ, fiscal management. And policy and its company and regulation, IMDB, flag displays and patriotic activities. I'm not going to go through the, all the changes. The policies were posted for public review and no comments were received. So I move to approve the second reading and amend referenced policies and the regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. The motion carries. Any further business to come before the board? If not, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We're adjourned. Thank you.